Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. Everyone, please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are being filmed for cable television. First item, money done tonight is some nominations for the annual Daniel Townsend Award. We announced about a month ago that we would be taking nominations and any recommendations from residents. And so, in the meantime, we have a couple of that have come forward that we would like to suggest and take in consideration for the board. One of them is our former Selectmen Finance Committee member and Board of Appeals member, David Drislane. David, obviously, longtime member of the community. He was our marshal of our bicentennial, tricentennial parade and very well-deserving. Another was Selectmen Town Moderator and former town administrator, H. Joseph Maney. Again, lifetime in the town, done a lot to shape the town. And obviously, we have a, we've named a room at the town hall after him. So, again, also very deserving. Another member that, another one that came forward was Planning Board Member on numerous building committees and also a lifetime member of this community also is Charlie Wills, who's currently on the Planning Board now. And a fourth one did come forward, I believe, we had a nomination for Jack Dollstead, who did a dozen years on the Planning Board, no, excuse me, Finance Committee, and he was the chair for many years. So, and I work with Jack and again, very, very deserving. So, what we're gonna do at our next, our next meeting, we are going to choose who we believe are the winners for this year. What I would suggest is that we choose more than one and I put that in front of the board. And I would, I would suggest that we would bring forward Dave Drislane and Joe Maney, who have done so much for the town and been instrumental in shaping this town for the last forty or fifty, sixty years. And I'd bring that in front of my members and see what your opinions are.
Phil, I would certainly agree with you. I think all of those nominations are worthy of the Townsend Award. I think Mr. Drislane and Mr. Maney, those two, I think, have a unique partnership. During their tenure as public servants, I know they worked together for a number of years. And I think the great community we are today is because of the foundation that they helped build and we continue to build upon in the town of Linfield. I'm comfortable with your thought of having Mr. Maney and Mr. Drislane honored with the Townsend Award. I think it's worthy.
Thank you. Dick?
I concur with that. I think it's important with respect to both Mr. Drislane and Mr. Maney that while their public service was mentioned, I think for their community service, Mr. Drislane has been very, very active in Rotary for decades and has been a real leader there in many of the fundraising activities that have taken place over the years and someone who's completely dedicated to the mission of Rotary and really sets an example for Rotarians here in Linfield. And then with respect to Mr. Maney, again, beside his public service, I think, you know, he is the person who was instrumental in the life organization and still is to this day. And it's certainly a great benefit to all of our senior citizens who look to downsize from their larger homes and have a place where they can remain in the community and be comfortable. So, I just want to add that, but I do concur that they're both very worthy of our consideration.
Well, in that case, with everybody on board, I would take on a motion.
I proudly move that the board vote to select the following candidates, recipients of the Daniel Townsend Award for excellence, Mr. David Drislane and Mr. H. Joseph Maney.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And at our first meeting, or when we can get them all together, we'll have an honor, an honor, we'll honor both of them at a meeting sometime in January. So, thank you. Second, we have everyone here that we'd like for the discussion over the gazebo, the town common improvements with the Historical Society. So, Charlie's here, our town engineer. And any members of the Historical Society gonna join him?
We have electronic.
Okay, okay.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here with the Historical Commission to tell you about the, an update on the, what work has been done on the common so far. As you've seen, the septic system has been installed. It's complete. So, the next step is to integrate the proposed gazebo onto the common. The Historical Commission, as you can see on this plan here, has been working with Cummings Architects and they've proposed a gazebo at the, near the bell over at the, on the common towards the tip and propose various walkways to integrate the gazebo into the common. In a moment, we'll go, we'll bring up Kirk Mansfield from the Historical Commission. He can talk to you about the, the design aspects of the gazebo. What we are working on is coming up with a plan to fully integrate the gazebo and to make various improvements on the common that we'll share with the Selectmen in the coming weeks. We'll be integrating, adding brick walkways. We're proposing add brick walkways along with various lighting on the common. Right now, if you drive by the common, it's pitch black, which is, it's a shame. It's such a focal point for the town, but at night, no one knows and everybody drives by at thirty miles an hour. So, it'd be great if we could integrate lights. We could integrate with the brick walkways, various electrical needs for the common, including the proposed gazebo. We'll improve the tree lighting. Unfortunately, when we install the septic system, we disrupted the lighting for the common, but we'll repair all those and have a better plan for the lighting of the trees and possibly irrigation for the common. So, this is, we're looking at it more of a holistic approach to the common. And we're hoping that with these various improvements that belong with the gazebo, it will be more of a focal point and more accessible for the town, for residents to enjoy this common. We're also proposing various handicap ramps and crosswalks to better access the common. So, I'll introduce Kirk Mansfield from the Historical Commission and then he can talk to you about the design aspects of the gazebo itself.
Great. Thank you, Charlie.
Yep, that's next. Hi, Kirk Mansfield, Linfield Historical Commission. So, we have gone through many different plans on this gazebo. And it's very important to us that we find something that's going to fit in with the architecture of the center. And what the latest drawing that Matt came up for us, came up with for us, you'll see right here. What we've decided to do is to really make the focus of this gazebo, the roof. So, it's going to be at a higher pitch with a cedar roof, cedar shingle roof. The, there will be railings on three out of the eight sections. The two sections that will not have railings will be, you can see, north and south right there. Those will be connected to the brick walkways. And they will also be facing directly at the doors of the church and then be facing towards the historical house. And then we have to figure out, you know, the ramps and the ADA for that. We're looking to do lighting in there as well. And we would like to be able to put speakers in there so that when we have the concerts in the common, that'll all be ready for it. But we obviously, to keep the historical aspect of it, we're going to keep that all hidden. So... So, right now, we do not have, we're still working with Matt. And then, once we get the final drawings, what we'd like to do is we're going to farm it out for a contractor. And then we'll discuss, you know, the materials that we're going to use to, to build it.
So, we talked about several things. First off, thank you for bringing that forward. You got new walkways you're looking to do. Obviously, that will enhance it. Is, and they're gonna be brick walkways.
Yes.
Is that in conjunction with anything we're doing on the town side or the Complete Streets program? Or is it all completely separate from, from what, what we've already got planned for the area?
This, this would be a, a first step, I would think, towards this, the improvements of the common. The brick walkways would be on the town side. The Complete Streets projects would come at a later date. That would improve the intersections, the crossings at the intersections at Summer and at South Common. Right now, we have a Complete Streets project that is going forward from the state for improvements around the schools. And we're hoping that will, after we complete, successful completion of those projects, that we can further submit for a grant for, for improvements around the common with the Complete Streets.
I thought that was part of the original program that was approved.
That, it's part of the, the plan, but it's the first grant or first grant opportunity, we decided to focus around the schools.
Just the schools, okay.
Yeah. And that, and that actually matches out the, the award money that the state puts out. So, we wanted to put it in, when we did the Complete Streets, when we bundled the Complete Streets projects, we bundled them into four hundred thousand dollar packages that would be acceptable for the state. The state maxes their awards at four hundred thousand dollars. So, we didn't want to exceed that and then face the town for picking up the tab on the rest of it, so.
I know, I know the discussion in the Complete Streets program was also lighting on the common, the walkways on each end of the Summer Street, part of the common and on the...
Correct, correct.
Down the triangle.
Correct. When I say lighting, I meant interior to the common itself. So, more like the lantern-style lighting that you would see on other streets.
Right.
With the, but with shorter lampposts.
Right. I'd say you work that whole consideration. There might be some other lighting coming along that's gonna help on the fringes.
Of course. Yes, yeah. All this is going to be in the same, it's gonna take those, those features into account, so.
Great. Beautiful. So, what timeframe are you looking at?
We're hoping for spring.
Yes. The Commission is going to be pricing out the gazebo this, this winter, hopefully select a contractor. And then we're hoping to do this work in the spring. We're looking to forward, forward to put a article in the town meeting, to, a separate article in town meeting to hopefully fund this additional work that's, that's needed, that we're looking for, for the common.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board?
The fund for the gazebo, excuse me, the gazebo itself, where's that coming from?
That, the Historical Commission.
Okay, so that's, how did you obtain that money? Through fundraising or?
Well, that's funds that we have on hand. We've had agreed to do that, build the gazebo. The site preparation and raising will be approved at town meeting, I believe, in April.
Correct. That's what we're shooting for, yes.
So, ultimately, a decision of this, I know there's certainly, the common, similar to Lexington, has tremendous historical value to the community, not just the town of Linfield, but for surrounding communities. What type of input have we had from the public? If you maybe go a little, what, what the mission is of the Historical Society itself, the people watching on TV who might not be too familiar with it?
So, we presented this at the country store last week, week before. And we were getting a lot of positive feedback from it. In fact, I didn't have anybody who had anything but nice things to say about it.
Yeah.
You know, people are excited that, you know, we're gonna put the common to a little bit more use and they'll have a place to bring the kids or just sit and relax and, you know, and I think it'll be nicer at, when they do the concerts. So, instead of doing the, the stage, the side of the building, we actually have a nice place to put it now.
And I will say, just for myself, that stage, how we leave it year-round, I think it kind of detracts from the town meeting house. I mean, it's just the significant nature of the town meeting, it's a, house itself. I've never been a fan of how that looks itself to the, I know there's a lot of discussion right now on the town meeting house. I know there's been various uses for the town meeting house over the last several hundred years. I know they have a fire chief in the back of the room. I know at one point, it was the fire station and it was a religious building. So, it's been had multiple uses over the years that have changed. So, I'm happy to hear that you've had input. And the town, you know, ultimately have some say and some input also on this decision.
Dick?
So, I think it's great that the Historical Commission is funding the gazebo, number one. I'm sorry, the society. And, but I guess this is more for Charlie on the town side. So, they've laid out their timeline for the gazebo. The other work, and Phil somewhat addressed it, but I still, I'm not clear on it at least. All right. Come the spring, once the gazebo, say, is in place, or early summer, whatever, all right? What, what do you expect to be done at that point as far as what the town is responsible for?
The, the standalone article that I would like to, well, we'd like to see proposed at town meeting would make these funds available immediately after the, the spring town meeting.
Make the what available?
The, the funds available immediately so that we could do the work in the spring and start work in the spring in conjunction with the work on the gazebo.
And that work would include?
The walkways.
Yeah.
That would include possibly irrigation. It would include the lighting. It would include all the things that I went over and...
So, if everything went as you would hope it would and would get approval at town meeting, most importantly?
Yes.
Then beyond, what would you see for the timing for all of that other work, other than the gazebo?
I would hope to start immediately after, after town meeting.
Right. But is that a couple of months later? Is it in the summertime?
No, I, what I mean immediately, I would hope that would, within a couple of weeks, within weeks, town meeting.
I mean, I'd love to see it for Memorial Day or something, you know, if that was at all possible. I think it's a great way to kind of introduce the whole thing, the concept.
It will be challenging because there's gonna be a lot of work and we're gonna be disrupting a lot of the common. The goal is to be able to do whatever we, we plan to do on the common so that we can grow grass for the, get grass growing before summer starts. So, if we were able to irrigate, then that would help, help the process out. But we're looking at a tight timeframe and we're hoping to hit the ground running as soon as we get approval from town meeting.
So, you would hope to irrigate? So, irrigation is not definitely in the plan or?
If I may, the Linfield Senate Water District Board is voting tonight with the director's recommendation to provide us water.
Okay.
So, I feel very confident that will be voted on tonight. And if there's a positive vote, and I think it will be, then we'll include irrigation in the system. And that would be, allow us to grow and do more plantings and seasonal flowers and...
All right. Great, terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have the review of our school safety evacuation drills. We have Chief Dave Breen from the Police Department and Chief Glenn Davis from the Fire Department. Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you for having us. We are in probably our fourth or fifth year in a long journey with school safety and security. This began when Superintendent Tremblay was appointed the superintendent of the Linfield School District. She and I had to sit down to discuss what we had accomplished and where we wanted to go. One of the things I hear from a lot of the chiefs is you can, as a chief of police, you can only accomplish as much as the superintendent lets you. And sometimes compromises must be made, whether it be for financial reasons or ideological reasons. And I must say that right from the start, cooperation from Superintendent Tremblay has been unbelievable. Her, the first thing she said to me was that the safety and security of the students and staff was paramount. And we've accomplished quite a lot over the last few years. Pleased with where we've come, but we know that we have a ways to go. And we're excited about the approach that we've taken and, and it saddens me that Superintendent Tremblay is leaving, but I'm sure that the incoming superintendent will see what we've done and he or she will be very much involved. So, initially, when we had to sit down, it involved just the superintendent of the schools and myself. And we decided to create a Safety and Security Committee, which involved Principal Ralston from the middle school, Sergeant Al Scottina, who's our SWAT officer, our school resource officer, who is now Alex Datto, and there's some other staff from the schools involved as well, including Kevin Seer, Director of Learning, Teaching and Learning. After we formed the committee, we decided to select a strategy that we wanted to do. And initially, one of the, one of the things in this country that was, was a misconception is that lockdown was the only component that could be used. And clearly, with some of the things that have occurred in our schools like Columbine, where lockdown wasn't necessarily the, the only approach that could have been used and perhaps would have saved some lives. So, we decided that while we're not exclude lockdown as our, as part of a component in our approach, we also felt as though evacuation could save lives. So, we decided when we did that, that we would include not only staff and faculty, but also parents. And we had a discussion with them, myself, at the PTO meetings. And everybody was on board. There were a lot of questions, but they were, they were good questions. So, we initiated, initiated the ALICE program. And we tailored it down a little bit for the students in the elementary schools because we felt as though some of the, the pieces of that acronym wouldn't be appropriate. They would be a little, a little too, too much for students at that age level. And then, we trained our, not only our officers and responding personnel, but we trained all the staff and the students. We got the portal, which at one time we had, we had Go to Blue Now. We had CopSync before. We changed companies, that company went bankrupt and there were some, some issues as far as ownership. So, that's another piece. Also, Superintendent Tremblay installed one hundred and sixty cameras, which are web-based. We'll have those available to us in our, in the communications room of the police station. And we're trying to get that also for the cruises. So, when we decided to do an evacuation, we had site preparation. So, with that, we had to determine the evacuation routes, which for four different schools, the busing routes and the reunification points. And we, we met many times to discuss what we were gonna do, how we were going to do it. For instance, there were some difficulties and some things we learned by this, by planning for it. And one of them was that with regard to the busing routes, you can't have a bus go through a hut zone. So, initially, you wanna get the buses to the reunification point and back to the, to the gathering point to get the students out as soon as possible. But we, we determined that you don't want the bus to go through the area that's, that's the hut zone near the school. So, taking an alternative route would have taken a much longer period of time. So, we changed our reunification point to a different location. These are all things that, that come up through careful planning. And we initially did this, the first row with just police and it was just walkthrough. There were no students involved. We looked at areas of strengths and possible weaknesses. And we reassessed those plans and amended those plans as needed. We then had more department head meetings, this time including not only police and the school district, but also fire, DPW Director and the Safety and Security Committee. And we came up with a comprehensive drill plan, which we were happy to say that we've all two, both elementary schools, the middle school and the high school, all participated in the drill. We were very pleased with the times that were done as far as reunification goes. I think two of the schools' parents, I think we only had one parent in one elementary school and one parent in the other that did not want their child to participate, which, which was fine. There was medical reasons for that. And I also want to say, thank you very much to our DPW Director, John Tomas, who has been instrumental in the planning of this and getting his workers to drive buses in an emergency to get the students out as fast as possible. an emergency to get the students out as fast as possible. We realized that the bus drivers might not be on duty at the time, so we thought, what better way to, in an emergency, we have the buses right by the DPW yard and those that are able to drive with their, with licenses, CDL licenses, can and will assist. And those drivers also, I want to thank them for, for really being involved and trying to assist in any way they, they can. So we're very pleased with what we've done. We're going to, I'll, I'll get on that a little bit. I'm actually going to turn it over to Chief Davis to discuss a few things. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you. As Chief Breen said, the groundwork was laid several years ago for this. And that's the hardest part of this, is making the decision to collaborate and work with department heads, the different resources available. When I became chief a year ago, I approached Chief Breen and said, you know, we need to collaborate on this and, and, and get all of our departments together. Under my role as emergency management director also, we pulled all the department heads together, had several meetings down this pathway. I can't speak enough about the public works, the school, the ability to pull everybody together. We had some internal meetings in the fire department for operations and we decided to do end-to-end testing of this. Tabletop exercises are great, but to prove that you can actually achieve it and do it in real life, that's what we were able to accomplish by this. We evacuated the four schools on four separate days, mid to late October. That involved actually using the Go to Blue software, doing an activation in the school, alerting the students and the faculty to evacuate, not only evacuate, but actually walk to a reunification point and then actually bus them to another school somewhere in our community. Our community doesn't have the advantage of some places where they can evacuate and regroup one building away. Our schools are all not very close proximity. So to achieve this was a big task. We mobilized the buses. We had to move and evacuate and reunify anywhere from 400 to 700 students and faculty. And like I said, tabletop exercises are great. We did this and achieved it very well. We had the collaboration of all the department heads. I had some neighboring fire chiefs come over and observe our operations because this was kind of ahead of the curve for some of our local communities. The Middleton Fire Chief came over, Lynn Fire Chief came over. Lynn actually made their drone available to us so we could get some aerial footage of the students evacuating, showing them, get on the buses. We learned stuff. Midway through this, after the second school, we decided to change the plan for the Huckleberry Hill School because of things we learned in the first two. So the big thing about this is that this is a work in progress. It's ever evolving. This is not just for the hostile environment. I know this is what everyone's talking about as active shooters and things like that. The big thing I learned from our Wakefield Fire Chief and our Redding Fire Chief locally, they've done this a couple of times. They've actually used it for emergencies in the schools other than a hostile event. In Wakefield, I believe they had a CO incident in one of the schools, carbon monoxide. They were able to achieve this from doing it. We know we can do this now. If we need to evacuate a school for either a gas event, a CO event, or some other emergency that makes us evacuate a school, the safety of the students is paramount and we know we can bring them somewhere else and reunify them. So we've achieved it. We plan to keep moving. We already have four more scheduled for the spring and April. We want to change up the scenarios a little bit, throw some curveballs and do some different scenarios to make sure that it's an ever-evolving plan among the departments. Any questions?
No questions. I just appreciate all the organization, coordination between the department heads, the staffing and the training that you do. It's, this doesn't happen overnight, obviously. And it's, I know it's still evolving, but, you know, it gives everybody a lot more comfort for their children in school and the parents and, and staff members and everybody. So, so thank you both very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. If I may, I'd also like to thank the abutters. We've had some great cooperation with the abutters of our school who allowed us to use their property to evacuate. So I want to thank them personally. That was very, very kind.
Great. Thank you.
Chief, I'd just like to agree with you on, it is Jane Tremblay, that six years that really, I think, flew by. She's been a tremendous superintendent and it is unfortunate to see her leave, but I know this is one of her first initiatives when I was on the school committee with school safety. But I don't think you should take a backseat. I know you're right at the forefront with her and I think where we are right now is beyond impressive, the safety of the buildings. I know there's a lot you've done and with the selectmen and the school committee that we really can't discuss publicly. And I applaud you for that, for coming and advocating for the money with Jane Tremblay in the school committee. I must say, as a father of two young kids, them coming home and being quite confident with what they learned and the questions they had answered with ease was pretty impressive for the staff of Jane Tremblay and, and her staff. Your staff was, was truly amazing, having led evacuations of 2,000 students out of Everett High School. The fact that you guys really took it a step further with, with the buses and everything you did with that, with the young students was beyond impressive. The one question I would leave with you, the two of you, if there's any money or further capital, we can send you a direction to support what you're doing in the mission of our school safety. I know my, I don't have to speak for my colleagues, who'd fully be in support of that, the continued great work Jane Tremblay, the school committee and yourself have done for school safety. So thank you.
Dick?
I'll just echo pretty much what both my colleagues have said. I, I think the, the one thing to me that's been a dramatic change from where we were just maybe a year ago is we've had from the very beginning, our police chief and superintendent working along with each other very well and DPW. And Chief Davis, I'd like to compliment you for reaching out to Chief Breen and really becoming part of the team. So that, that's to me been a, a big step forward and it's great to see two, you know, public safety heads working so closely together for the benefit of the community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I just would like to say that I've known Glenn for 25 years, so when he was chosen as chief, I was, I was pleased. I knew that there would be a good synergy between both of us, so I want to thank you as well for all the assistance you've given us.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it very much. Have a wonderful night. Next on the agenda is the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement with the Linfield DPW. Rob?
Yes, all the contracts that are before you are receiving ratification, DPW clerical workers, custodians, bus drivers and police, they're all within the guidelines of, said by the board of selectmen. We feel that they are fair contracts for excellent employees and for tax payers.
Thank you, Rob. Any, any questions on any of these from my board members?
None for me. It's within the guidelines we set, so I'm happy with that.
I know, I know Rob's worked very hard on these as long, as well as Bob, and getting these finally finalized and I appreciate that on your end. So without any other questions, I'll take motion on the first one for the DPW, please.
I move that the board vote to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, Council 93, Local 3434, DPW workers from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next one's for the Linfield clerical workers.
I move that the board vote to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, Council 93, Local 3434, clerical workers from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Third one's the Linfield school custodians and bus drivers.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board vote to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, Council 93, Local 3434, school custodians and bus drivers from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I was actually going to see how long Chris's voice was going to last.
I felt bad for him.
Hopefully by the end of the meeting.
And the last one will be the, for the Linfield Police Association.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board vote to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Linfield Police Association, Massachusetts Coalition of Police, Local 414, AFL-CIO, from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the renewal of our annual licenses, which we have a few. We have our all alcohol restaurant licenses, wine and malt restaurant licenses, all alcohol package store, wine and malt package store, all alcohol club, common Vic, weekday entertainment, automatic amusement, fortune teller, livery, class one auto dealers and class two auto dealers. I'll, I'll forego reading each one individual. I know, I know you want to hear everybody down. So I'll take a motion for renewal, annual license renewals.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board vote to renew the annual licenses granted by the board as listed in the following category, subject to payment of all fees and taxes prior to the end of the calendar year. All alcohol restaurant, wine and malt restaurant, all alcohol package store, wine and malt package store, all alcohol club, common vixxler, weekday entertainment, automatic amusement, fortune teller, livery, class one auto dealers, class two auto dealers.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Where is the fortune teller in town?
Broadway.
On Broadway, there's one out there?
Bob Curtin.
Okay, the next one, the appointment of election workers. We have a request for new election workers to be appointed. We have Alexander Angus, Cynthia Schott, Virginia DeViglio, Diane Ruby, Alan Kelter, Paul Donato, Loreen Donato, Nancy DiMarco, Robin Hoffman and Darlene Van Alstine.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the board appoint the election workers recommended by the town clerk, Trudy Reed, and as you just stated, the names of the individuals.
Second.
And for a term to expire June 30, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. And we have one use of facilities request for the MS walk.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the board vote to approve the use of town streets for the National Multiple Sclerosis Society charity walk on June 20, 2020, subject to any conditions to be imposed by the chief of police and department of public works.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next one on the agenda is the resignation of one of our Board of Library trustees. Dr. Janine Rodriguez-Saldana has resigned from the Board of Library Trustees. We will be taking letters of interest between now and our next meeting. I, I've met, I've met and worked with Dr. Saldana many times and I, I just want to thank her for all the hard work she's done in this town and, and what a wonderful person she's been to work with. So, gentlemen, any, any other comments?
Phil, I would agree. I think there is a more pleasant person and more dedicated person than Janine. She's going to be certainly missed. She's done a lot of tremendous work for the library. Those certainly going to be tough shoes to fill, but I know we will with the depth of our volunteer base in Linfield, but I wish her the very best and I thank her for all she's done for Linfield.
Can I just add my own personal thanks? Janine's certainly an outstanding citizen of our community and along with her husband, Victor, they both do so much for
Absolutely.
For the community. So thank you for your service, Janine.
So any, any interested parties, send their resume and letter of interest to Bob Curtin at the town hall. Thank you. And the, we, there's no need for executive session tonight, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I reluctantly move that we adjourn.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.